Okay, I've got 6:30. Going to begin. As a preliminary matter, this is Mary Beth Lynch. I'm the chairperson. Please permit me to confirm that all members and staff are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Paul George.
Yeah.
Lisa Cosette?
Here.
Peter Mulcahy?
Here.
Patrick Follen?
Yeah.
Thank you. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bernard Cahill?
Here.
Rowan McAllister?
Here.
Krista Mapolo?
Here.
Patty Sheehan?
Here.
Thank you. Good evening. This open meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting of the zoning board of appeals, it is convened via telephone conference and video conference via Google Hangout. You may join by telephone by calling 1-440-494-6776 and entering the following PIN: 568-432-855-POUND. Let's cover the meeting, basic ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda, and before we do so, please permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Mary Beth Lynch, will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for their participating item or guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the list of members first, and then to staff members, inviting each by name to provide any comment or question. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion, and for a second, please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute and unmute your phone by pressing *6 or mute your computer when you are not speaking as to not trigger your camera feed or background noise. After members have spoken, the chair will afford public comments as follows. The chair will ask each member of the public who wishes to speak to identify themselves by name and address only. For any responses, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a discussion with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken this evening will be conducted by a roll call vote. As provided by the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, Section, and Section 10, the Board of Appeals has granted the power to hear and decide appeals or petitions for special permits and variances. For a special permit, the board must find that a proposal will not create a nuisance by virtue of noise, odor, smoke, vibrations, traffic generated, unsightliness, or other conditions detrimental to the public good. For a variance, the board must find that a proposal does not depart nor derogate from either the proposed or intention of the bylaw, and that due to the unique conditions of the lot size, shape, topography, and shape, strict compliance with the requirements of the zoning bylaws would be an undue hardship. The purpose of the Shrewsbury bylaws is amongst other purposes to lessen congestion in the streets, conserve health, secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other dangers, and to provide adequate light and air, to prevent overcrowding of land, to encourage housing for people of all income levels, to avoid undue concentration of population, to facilitate the adequate provisions of transporting water, water supplies, drainage, sewage, schools, parks, open space, and other public requirements, to conserve the value of land and buildings, including the conservation of natural resources, and the prevention of blight and pollution of the environment, to encourage the most appropriate use of land through the town of Shrewsbury, and to preserve and increase its amenities. In addition to keeping your microphones muted until called upon, I would remind the public to please keep any questions or comments brief and to the point. All questions should be made through the chair. First item of business is to sign a bill for $434 to the Worcester Telegram Gazette for January 25th, 2021 legal notices. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the bill as read.
Motion to approve?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
I, Mary Beth Lynch. On to the 6:30 public hearing. First, in front of us will be 10 Rebelli Street, Residence B1, Caleb and Natalie Smith. This is for a special permit to Section 4B to construct an addition on an existing nonconforming single-family dwelling. The public hearing for 10 Rebelli Street is a new public hearing. Could the applicant please introduce themselves and explain their application to the board and to the public?
How you guys doing? I'm Caleb Smith, and this is my wife.
Hi, guys. How are you?
This is Natalie. So, long story short, we moved to Shrewsbury about five years ago. We moved into my wife's grandmother's house. She purchased this house in 1959, so it's been in the family for many years. We have two children, a six-year-old and a four-year-old. We have a cake-style home with two, originally two bedrooms upstairs. We took one of the bedrooms and put a little divider up for our kids to both safely be upstairs. But naturally, they're growing, and you know, we're hoping to have another child soon. And we really don't want to leave our neighborhood. We live on a dead-end street, wonderful neighbors, safe, safe area, great school district. So we would like to put an addition on to have a little bit more living space, and then to also provide a larger bedroom upstairs, so both children have more space, you know, naturally sleeping in a cozier bedroom.
Great. Thank you very much for all that information. Ms. McAllister, do you have anything to add?
Just to say that this is existing nonconforming because of its front and side yard setback, or excuse me, front and rear yard setbacks. The proposed addition will be affecting the side yard setback, decreasing it to 15 feet, but the required side yard setback in this district is 10. So, yeah, no, no change or no necessary... Excuse me. There's only... Not past the minimum. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rowan. I appreciate that. Let's go to the board, and let's open it up for questions or comments. Let's start with Patrick.
I'm fine.
Great. Peter?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Wonderful. Lisa?
Nothing for me either.
Great. Thank you. Paul?
Nothing for me.
Thank you very much. Being that this is a public hearing, are there any members of the public who wish to be heard on this matter? This is always the tricky part with these meetings. I'm going to give it a few seconds. If there's anyone out there that would like to be heard, let us know. We should have some elevator music to play during these little intermissions.
I could do the Jeopardy soundtrack.
You could do that.
I do that with my students.
That's great. Okay, well, it doesn't sound like there's anyone out there that wishes to be heard on this matter. So let's, I'm going to look for a motion to close the public hearing on this, please.
Motion to close?
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Can I get, Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
And Mary Beth Lynch, aye. There's motion to close. Is there any objections or any part of the application that we need to discuss, members of the board? Patrick? Peter? Paul? Lisa?
I'm all set.
Yeah, I have nothing. I believe the addition will not worsen the existing nonconforming areas, and it conforms with all the other setbacks, so I'm fine.
Thank you.
No, she's not saying that for me.
Wonderful. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve a special permit to construct an addition to an existing nonconforming single-family dwelling at 10 Rebelli Street?
Motion to approve as stated.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Great. All in favor? Let's go with Peter.
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I, Mary Beth Lynch. So moved. Congratulations and thank you. And by the way, what, I'm probably saying the name of the street wrong, so can you correct me, please?
It's Rebelli.
It is Rebelli. Okay.
You did a good job. I have a quick question for you all. I know this meeting's 6:30 to 11:00. I didn't know, are we supposed to stay on to the end? We're going to do bedtime routines soon.
No, you're, you can go.
Thank you so very much, everybody.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Second hearing is to hear the appeal of 810 Harvard Ave., located in Residence B1. This is Harvard Realty LLC at 1260 Washington Street, Norwood. This is for a special permit to Section 4B3 to change a photography business to an appraisal business. The public hearing for 810 Harvard is a new public hearing, and could I ask the applicant to please introduce themselves and explain their application to the board and to the public?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Richard Ricker. I'm an attorney with offices at 11 Maple Avenue, as you know. That's just for the record. I'm here representing Brian Loughlin, who's the manager of 810 Harvard Ave. Realty LLC, who is the applicant for this proposal. This, and Brian is with us tonight as well. I see him there. And I also see David Officer, who represents the seller of the property. This is a proposal to allow Brian to put his appraisal business in this building. I would suggest to you, well, right now, he's, he's a one-man show. He does not expect any great expansion, although he might have one or two employees at some stage. But I note from the previous appeal for the photography studio, there was some discussion of two or three employees in that business as well. As you know from the history of this site, at one time, it was Larry Adams Sewer Pumping business was here. There were a bunch of trucks and construction equipment and, and so forth for his sewage pumping business. Then the photography studio moved in, and you granted a special permit back in 2000 for that. This proposal, I would suggest to you, frankly, is, is getting better and better all the time, because this is an office-type use. This is quiet. It's an appraisal business. He has a company. It's BCL Real Estate Appraisal Services. He would operate it himself there. He's just looking to move in and operate, frankly. There's not any changes to the building that are anticipated. It is pretty well laid out for offices and large open areas that he'll be able to use. So no, no major changes are expected whatsoever. I would suggest to you, in accordance with the bylaw, that this is certainly not a nuisance type of request. There is no real nuisance value to this request whatsoever. It's quiet. It's indoors. The parcel is just about all building and all parking lot, as you can see. I did ask for a waiver when we filed this of the plot plan. I will withdraw that request, because we've now given you not just a plot plan, but we also gave you a layout plan showing you what the parking situation is like there. But naturally, nothing's going to change, and nothing's going to expand, because there is no room to change or expand, frankly. So I would ask that you respectfully grant the special permit. And if you have any questions, we'd like to answer them.
Thank you very much. Can I turn to Ms. McAllister and ask if there's anything to add to this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I believe Attorney Ricker did a nice job describing the change. I do just want to point out, I, I don't believe that this is a certified plot plan.
No, the other, the other one is.
Oh.
The, the other plot is...
The mortgage?
Yep. Yep.
I can pull that one up then. My mistake.
They both use the same footprint.
Yes, and I feel like, let me see, is this the correct one that you're referring to?
No, that's the old one from the old file.
Okay.
But I can, I, I can tell you, there's a...
There it is.
...plan, yes.
Yeah, my mistake. Sorry about that.
And as you can see, as you can see, that shows you how much driveway is really there.
Yes, then that is all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's work through the board, see if there's any questions or comments. Lisa?
Have to unmute. No, I don't have any comments. The, the plot plan that we were originally shown during this meeting, anyway. At first, I wondered about that parking space going into Harvard, Harvard Ave. That's attached to the building, but the paved area actually does extend all the way out to Harvard Ave. So I have, I have nothing to ask about that.
Good. Patrick, anything on your end?
No, I'm good.
Paul?
I got one question. I think in the last special permit for this building, was there some type of question about signage for the building that was approved?
You know, I don't see it in the decision, Paul. I've got the decision right here. It's September 15th, 2000, is the last...
And there was nothing about signage?
No. No, it just said professional studio and office. And, and, but, but now that you raise that issue, I would suggest to you that Mr. Loughlin's plans would have to be, would be to have a small sign in keeping with the bylaw.
Okay.
He doesn't, you know, he doesn't do a lot of business out of his, out of his office. It's really mostly for drafting and for getting things printed.
Yeah, I was just thinking, because the last, I thought we were discussing about, for the abutters, the neighborhood that it was in, that we wanted to have a small signage for the building, but I might be mistaken then.
You know, I don't even know if there's a sign on there, Paul, frankly.
Okay.
I don't think there is.
You good, Paul?
Yeah, I'm all set. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Peter?
Just quickly, and I think Attorney Ricker kind of anticipated this a little bit in his response to Mr. George. How much coming and going would you expect of customers compared to the photography studio?
Very, very, very few. For the appraisal business, it's only the appraiser and perhaps an employee, if he has one, that would be there. You rarely have visitors to the appraisal office. It's, it's the type of business that they have to go out and do their business. They have to go out and take the pictures, the measurements, and everything else, and then they come back and pull it all together.
Okay, great. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and I have no further questions. Being that this is a public hearing, is there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
Yes, I'd like, I have a question.
Sure. Thank you. Can you please identify yourself by your name and your address?
Yes, I'm Rita Corzon, and my address is 11 Harvard Ave. I'm right across from the photography studio.
Great. Thank you, Rita. Please let us, you go, go ahead.
How many employees do they foresee maximum there in the future? I know you don't know right now, but what would be the maximum employee count there?
I've spoken at length with Brian about this, and although he thinks that he would probably have one employee at this stage, you know, he, he can correct me if I'm wrong, because he's with us, but I, the thought is that he wouldn't have more than two, so.
And this is a real estate business, right?
No, it's, it's an appraisal business. It's not a real estate sales business at all. It's, it's...
No, I realize that, but you're just going to appraise real estate?
That's correct. Mostly commercial real estate, yes.
And what would be the hours of operation for the business?
Well, and because he will be inside most, all the time, you know, it would, he generally would run the usual business hours, but I would suggest that if he stayed there, because he had an appraisal to have to get done, if he stayed there till eight or nine o'clock at night, I wouldn't be surprised. It's the kind of business that sometimes you get pressed for deadlines, especially in this day and age. So I would suggest that's probably the norm, is, is your, you know, eight to six, 6:00 PM, something like that, if he's a long-hour kind of guy. But you might have the occasional, you know, stay longer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corzon. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard on this? Can I give it a few seconds? Okay, I think we've given it enough time. I certainly hope we have. So let's go through roll call, see if any members have received enough information to make an informed decision. If I could start with Lisa?
I have enough information.
Hello, I'm sorry. This is Joe Trotta speaking.
Hi, Joe. Are you there?
I have enough information.
Hello, I'm sorry. This is Joe Trotta speaking.
Yes.
Hello, I'm sorry. This is Joe Trotta speaking.
Yes, Joe, yes.
Joe, I believe you need to turn your TV off.
Can you hear me okay?
Joe, you have some, there's some noise back. If you could turn your TV down. Thank you. Looks like he... Let's give Joe a second, if that's okay with everyone.
Joe lives on Main Circle.
Great. Okay. Joe, are you out there? I'm going to give this a couple of seconds. I want to make sure that we hear all parties here.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, Joe.
Hi, how are you?
I'm great. How are you?
Good, thank you. I'm sorry, I had the TV on. I was watching at the same time. You're probably getting some feedback on it.
That's okay.
My name is Bill Trotta. I live at 19 Main Circle. We can see that building from our house. I don't have a problem with any of it. I'm just curious a little bit more on the signage. And was just, I know Attorney Ricker had mentioned that it would be, in keeping with whatever the bylaws are. Pardon my ignorance, but I don't know what the bylaws are. I just want to make sure that whatever signs might be there would be discreet. To be perfectly honest, I don't even know if there's a sign on the building today.
Ms. Lynch, I could, I could answer that if you like.
Please. Thank you, Patty. Please.
Sure. So, so the zoning bylaw allows one sign up to three square feet in area to advertise the professional business in a residential zoning district.
So, and it would just be an unlit sign, I take it?
It doesn't restrict it to be, to be whether illuminated or non-illuminated, but I, I, maybe we could just ask the owner what their intention is, and we can speak to that.
I, I can tell you that we hadn't even talked about it, Patty or Joe. To the extent that he really doesn't need a lot of signage, because it's not the kind of business that you're attracting people off the street, that's why I suggested, and he shook his head yes when I saw him on here, that the signage would be, would be small if, if, so. Joe, I'd be happy to talk to you at any time about it, and talk to Brian about it as well, if there's any issues. You know, he's not looking for any kind of showplace signage by any means.
Okay. Yeah, I assume not. So I think we're okay with it. I don't have any issues with it. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. I'm going to give this one more try to make sure all public, anyone out there in the public would like to be heard. Okay. Let's try this again. I need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Motion to close?
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call here. Lisa?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So, thank you. Any objections on the board's behalf to any of the comments that were brought up? Lisa?
No, I have no issue with this, and I don't believe there should be any special conditions. I'm fine with it.
Thank you. Peter?
I'm fine with it as well. Thank you.
Great. Patrick?
I am fine with it too.
Thank you. And Paul?
I'm all set.
Thank you, and I am as well. I'm going, you need a motion to approve the waiver request for zoning board of appeals, rules and regs, Article 3, Section B, to not provide a certified plot plan? Can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I believe that was withdrawn.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
Yes. Thank you.
Sorry about that. All right, let's get a motion to approve the special permit to change a photography business to an appraisal business at 810 Harvard Ave. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve as stated.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So moved.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. All right, next order of business is to hear the appeal of 378 Maple Ave., commercial business, Shrewsbury Maple LLC, PO Box 500, Shrewsbury, Mass. This is for a variance to Section 7E, A, 4B, and 7E, 5D, to erect a 320-square-foot sign extending above the roof line. The public hearing for 378 Maple Ave. is a new public hearing. Could I ask the applicant to please introduce themselves and explain this application to the board? I believe we have someone down who's trying to speak that is muted.
*6.
Yep, *6. Thank you. I see somebody looking like they are trying to *6 it, so I'm going to give them a second. Nope. Can't hear you yet. If you, yep, thank you. If you *6, you should be okay. Bottom left of your screen also, there's a microphone that you... Nope.
This is Bart Steele from Viewpoint Sign.
So Bart, it looks like Todd gave you the thumbs up to go and proceed forward?
No, I, I was, I'm actually here just to add any expertise questions for the signage, but is he, is he not there?
He is there, but he's having a hard time. We're not here.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll sit back and be quiet until I'm heard, until I'm requested, then.
Thank you. Anybody out there? Okay. He's going to try to fix it? Uh-huh, he's going to call in. Great. This is great. We'll give you as much time as you need. Don't you worry. This is where the Jeopardy music would come in handy, for sure.
We're all in.
We need that. That's good. If I had to call in, I would be... Not, it's not easy. Thank you, Rowan. That's great.
Are you able to read the text well enough on that, on the image I'm sharing? Would anyone like me to zoom in a bit?
Okay, I'm...
Okay, I'm, I'm...
Hello, Mr. Rodman.
Todd Rodman. I'm, I'm very sorry. I, I thought I was, uh, you can hear me now.
Yes, we can hear you.
So, my name's Todd Rodman.
Um...
Turn down my audio.
Yeah, we're having a feedback, so we can hear.
Is this any better?
Yes.
Is this any better? Okay, good. Sorry about that. So my name's Todd Rodman. I'm a lawyer with the law firm of Cedar and Chandler in Worcester, Massachusetts, and I'm here on behalf of Shrewsbury Maple LLC, who's the owner of the property at three seventy-eight Maple Avenue. As you've already heard from Bart Steele from Viewpoint Sign, Bart is here with me tonight, as is Susan Nichols, who is, uh, with the applicant. Between the three of us, we'll try and answer any questions that you have. And we're specifically, we're here tonight for permission to install a sign within the renovated and rebranded Marketplace Shrewsbury Shopping Center. And the size and the location of the sign are what trigger the requirement for relief from the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw. Specifically, um, variances both for the size of the sign, more than the two hundred allowed square feet, and the, um, the height above the, uh, the, what's called the roof line, the parapet or the roof line in the bylaw. Section seven of the bylaw regulates signage, and because the sign exceeds the two hundred square feet that's allowed, it's three hundred and twenty square feet. And its location on the building front technically exceeds the prohibition that a sign can't project more than a foot above the base elevation of the roof line. As currently positioned, the sign would project more than a foot above the base elevation. But that's somewhat misleading because if you looked at the building from a distance, you would see that the sign appears to be well below the actual peak of the roof. It's a mansard or a sloped roof, and the sign is actually thirty-nine and a half inches below the peak of the roof. But because of the technical definition in your bylaw, it violates the prohibition, uh, exceeding more than a foot above, what you define as the parapet or the roof line. But again, in other words, when viewed from the street, the sign appears to be well below the actual roof. The property has a long history of use as a shopping center. It was constructed in the nineteen fifties. And although the sign height is a technical violation of the bylaw, again, you see from the plans that, because of the mansard roof design, the sign is actually well below the visible roof in appearance. And also because of the size, shape, and configuration of the shopping center, the building on which the sign will be placed is set back approximately two hundred and fifty feet from the entrance to the shopping center on Maple Avenue. And when you see a site, the site plan that we submitted for the shopping center, the shopping center has frontage on both Route Nine and Maple Avenue, and the setback distance, the size of the sign is really required in order to read it from the road. The size is proportional or appropriately sized for the size of the building. And when you take into consideration the distance from the street that the sign is going to be located. I'm just going to summarize a couple of other things, and then between Bart Steele from Viewpoint Sign and Susan Nichols from the applicant, we'd be happy to try and answer any questions. And if you'd like me to, I can also take you through the various variance criteria and the reasons why. It's my opinion that, uh, this, uh, is, deserves an approval by the board. I just wanted to say that in the letter to the board dated February fifth, Rowan McAllister, had two comments. First, that the applicant verify the height of the sign and that it was measured at its highest and lowest points, that you have accurate data. And secondly, that the applicant should acknowledge that in the future, Ms. Sheehan had asked us to submit with our application a summary of anticipated future signage. And one of those signs, a blade sign, uh, Ms. McAllister had flagged could, could need a variance in the future, and we acknowledged that. And Susan Lynch on Feb... Susan Nichols, sorry, on February seventeenth, had submitted a revised plan with the detail that had been requested by the town. At this point, I think I'm going to stop talking and try and answer any questions that the board may have. And as I said, I'm happy to take you through the variance criteria or address any other issues that the town may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. McAllister, is there anything further to add?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, no, my comments have been summed up for me. I would just add that the applicant did submit a waiver request to not provide a handful of, um, items listed, um, in the rules and requirements. Regarding the, the plan, um, and none of these are, I feel, related to the signage. Um, and as does the applicant, um, as they've noted in their waiver request. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rowan. Let's work through the board, see if they have any questions or comments for the applicant. Let's start with Lisa, please.
Sure. Um, so thank you for that presentation. I, I really don't have any issue with the placement of the sign. And, you know, whether that derogates from the intent of the bylaw in that regard. I did have a question about the size of the sign, however. I do believe, or I, I appreciate the need for the size of the letters to be what they are, to be visible, from the distance you mentioned. However, I, I would like to know what the dimensions of the sign would be if it was only as wide as the text you're showing.
Okay. Madam Chair, if I can, I'd like to ask Bart Steele to try and address that specific question.
Good evening. My name's Bart Steele from Viewpoint Sign and Honing. And you're asking what size the sign would be if what?
If it was only as wide as the text you're showing for Marketplace. And then I have a follow-up question.
I would not be able to answer a question like that without doing the drawing.
Okay.
But I, but I, but I can say that, if I, if I may, Todd, um, if, if the sign was reduced to that, the purpose of this sign is to identify the, the marketplace as a whole. It would be substantially smaller, less than half the size, and would probably not be worth doing.
Okay, so...
It wouldn't have the visibility that you'd need from two hundred and fifty plus feet away.
Well, the text would still be readable. Um, but, so are there plans, uh, Ms. McAllister, could you, uh, go to the next page? Please. I think it's the next page. No, it, there's a picture of the entire building.
Okay.
Sorry, I think it's in the application itself. Page seven.
Sounds good. One moment, please.
While we, while, while we're looking for that, may I just ask a quick clarifying question that has to do with what Ms. Cuzett just said? Is the sign, is the sign any wider? That, so actually, that's the image I'm thinking of. The sign's not any wider than the actual text that stands up, right? It's not like a piece that continues along the length of the building.
It does. If you could, uh, Ms. McAllister, if you could go back up to page seven, I think.
Because I didn't realize that, I don't think.
There we go.
Okay.
So this upper image that shows the entire building is, this is what you're proposing, correct? Mr. Steele or?
I'm just zooming in. I'm on my cell phone, so.
Oh, sorry.
I'm zooming in on what you're looking at. Alright, so you're looking at my drawing. Okay, so now, hold on one second.
I had interpreted the, the stripy part, for lack of a better word, as the roof. Not as a continuation of the sign. Okay, it is the roof.
That's right.
Okay.
Yes, if that's the question, I'm sorry. Yes, that's true. The stripy part, good description, is the mansard roof that slopes up behind the sign. It's not part of the sign.
Okay, thank you.
The sign itself is just the text.
So I, I'm so sorry. I didn't understand your, what the question was.
I didn't ask it very well.
The other horizontal line is the gutter. I believe.
But Bart, what they're talking about is, there's one image of the sign which shows the sloped striping, which is the sloped roof, which extends behind and sloping away from the sign, which is vertical. And, um, which, as I said, the top of the tallest letter, which is K, is thirty-nine and a half inches below the actual peak of the roof.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, that, that clarifies everything for me.
Okay.
I have no...
Sorry, I apologize. I, I was having trouble understanding.
It, it's not you. It's me trying to understand that what's the sign and what is not part of the sign, and now it's clear.
These are individual letters that are going to be mounted onto that raceway, so they're, the letters are independent. There is no backer to the sign.
Yes. Yep, okay. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Lisa? Peter?
Sure. Um, so Attorney Rodman, thank you for your, your excellent presentation. My question is just to make, to sort of clarify. So the hardship here, I take it, is essentially the positioning of the existing buildings, the fact that the existing structures are so far back on the lot. It's sort of one hardship that you need to have a big sign for anyone to actually be able to read it. And the second hardship is basically that if you were to limit it to the strict text of the bylaw, the sign could only essentially be twelve inches high above the gutter, which again would be completely useless. And it has to do with the fact that we define it by parapet or roof line rather than the actual peak of the roof, which here is much higher than the sign itself.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's well said. Um, there's, there's a recent, well, a two thousand and eight land court case in which the land court approved variance requests for a Walgreens, which obviously is different. But some of the discussion is exactly as you've described it, that the sign was needed for effective advertising, that the increase in size was warranted due to the location. And even in this land court case, the distance was from a state highway, so we're setback. Yes, absolutely right. I can go through the rest of the criteria that's necessary.
Um, that's all I need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Paul, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question on, um, how is the sign going to be lit? And if it is screened by the roof line for the abutters and the rail?
If I may, um, the sign is internally illuminated with, um, low voltage LED lighting. And you will not see the sign from the opposite side of the building because it's thirty-nine and a half inches below the roof line.
Thank you.
Patrick, do you have any questions?
No, that, um, that covers everything for me.
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you for, um, giving me a vocabulary word, parapet. Never heard. But thank you for that. Being that this is a public hearing, I would like to see if there's anyone out there that would like to be heard on this matter. Let me give it a few seconds. I know we have neighborhoods behind, um, this shopping center, and I, um, would not be surprised if we have somebody that's trying to speak, so.
Mary Beth, can I ask one more question?
Yes, Paul.
Does this signage affect the pylon sign that they have out in front? Square footage wise?
That's a good question. Um, Patty, can you? Can Patty answer that question?
Yes, yeah, just had to unmute myself. Yes, so, um, so you see that in the, um, documents, um, for the application, they had to give a signage summary. So, you know, we have to do the calculation. There's only so much square footage of signage allowed on the property based on the frontage, and they're in compliance with that. So the pylon sign will still remain in place, and they'll use it to change the sign faces in and out, I, I would expect. Did that answer your question?
I guess.
So can I piggyback on that question?
Yeah, the signage on the property, yeah, the signage on the property with this sign being added, the total square footage is in compliance, because otherwise they would have to ask the variance.
Paul, you good?
Thank you, Patty.
Okay, um, we've got it open up to, uh, public hearing and looking for feedback from anybody. Give it a couple more seconds.
It does seem that someone is raising their hand and trying to speak. You're welcome to unmute yourself.
I ca... It's star six, and I cannot find that person because my screen's not big enough, so.
I believe it's Eileen Lovejoy, if I saw the name correctly pop up. I don't know if she's calling in or is on video. It's star six to unmute. Well, if she's raising a hand, she must be on Google Meet.
Right.
If you can't speak, you can also chat one of us, or all of us, um, in the upper right, the little chat icon, and send your question in if you want.
That's a good idea. Here we go. Alright, thanks. She says...
I know every day.
She can also try Control D if she's on a PC.
Alright.
Didn't work.
Didn't work. Alright, Eileen, do you want to try the chat method? This seems to be working.
What is?
What is fac-lit?
LED. Backlit LED. What is backlit LED?
I think that's a question, forgive me, Madam Chair, I think that's a question for Bart Steele. I think the question is, what is a fac-lit LED?
Yep. Okay, this, thank you for the question. Uh, these are individual letters, and inside each of the letters is low voltage LED lighting. And it is installed on the back of the letter, and so that the light comes through only the face of the letter. Whereas we used to use neon on these signs, now everything's green, everything now is low voltage LED.
Eileen, does that answer the question that you are looking to ask? If you want to just chat us and let us know? So she's asking about lighting affecting the abutters. I think we did discuss that, but Bart, if you could expand upon that, please?
So... Well, Bart, can you address the fact that there will be no, um, there's no glare or anything else from low voltage LED? The individual letters will be illuminated, and none of the abutters to the rear of the property will see anything because it's screened from, it's on the opposite side of the roof, and it's thirty-nine and a half inches below the parapet of the roof. So nobody will see anything from the rear.
That is correct.
Thank you. Looks good from Eileen. Take that, that's a two thumbs up. Is there anybody else that wishes to be heard on this matter? If so, raise your hand. We have a new form of communication. Okay. Do we think we've given them enough time? Yes, okay. Thank you. I'm going to go through and see if the members have enough information from the appellant to make an informed decision. I'd like to start with Lisa, please.
Yes, I have enough information. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter?
I'm set, thank you.
Thank you, Paul?
I'm all set, thank you.
And Patrick?
Good.
Thank you. I need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Motion to close?
There a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Mary Beth's aye. Okay, so, need a motion to approve the waiver request for zoning Board of Appeals Rules and Regulations, Article Three, Section Three, One, Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six. Do not provide locations of buildings on abutting properties, dimensions of subject property boundaries, elevations and locations of existing signs, location of utility lines, location of trash disposal, and drain calculations. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved, or sorry, mo, motion to approve as stated?
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, uh, Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And Mary Beth, aye. Do I have a motion to approve a variance for Section Seven E, Four B, and Five D to construct a sign with an area of approximately three hundred and twenty square feet that will exceed approximately seventy-two inches above the lower roof line of three seventy-eight Maple Ave?
Motion, sorry, make a motion to approve as stated?
Thank you. Can I get a second, please? Thank you all in favor. Thank you, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Mary Beth Lynch, aye, so moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. Appreciate it. I'm sorry for my difficulty connecting with the audio, but I really appreciated your patience. Thank you.
Don't worry, it happens, happens to the best of us. Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, our final, um, appeal is to hear the appeal of two thirty Cherry Street Limited Industrial by Christopher Lund at two thirty-five Cherry Street, Shrewsbury, Mass. Um, appealing the decisions of the building inspector from Section Seven B One. The appellant appeals the following alleged determinations of the building inspector. One, that the site plan approval by the building, by the planning board is not required for the property. Two, that the use on the property has not expanded to the detriment of the neighborhood. Three, that the use of the property for service and repairs is allowed as a right. Four, that the use of the property for sales of construction equipment does not require a special permit. And five, the use of the property for the sale of automobiles is allowed as a right. The public hearing for two thirty Cherry Street is a new public hearing. I will ask the applicant to introduce themselves and explain the application to the board. And I will then ask the representative of two thirty, thirty Cherry Street to respond to the appellant's comments, followed by any commentary by town council, town planner, or town building inspector. As with all public hearings before the board, all questions for the appellant, the landowner, or the public need to go through me, the chair. Could the appellant please introduce themselves and explain the application to the board?
Madam Chair, if I might, uh, thi, uh, this is Mark Donahue. Uh, I represent actually the property owner of Polito Development Corp. Uh, just to refresh the board's recollection, this is not a new public hearing. It's a continued public hearing.
Thank you.
January session. Um, and, and the applicant was, uh, was provided that evening to talk a lot about, um, you know, his, his concerns. And, um, I, I thought we would have the opportunity to, to rather reply to what he said during the January meeting today. But I, I'll certainly leave it to the chair and decide how you want to operate.
Um, I would like to, um, is Mr. Lund in attendance?
Yep.
I would like to give him, um, just a few minutes, please, to address the board, if you will.
Good evening. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um, my, yep, my name's Chris Lund and I live at two thirty-five Cherry Street. And, uh, I appreciate my opportunity to continue my, my, uh, application to the board tonight that I started, uh, with this process quite a long time ago. And it's cost me a, a lot of money to get this decision, uh, right with, with the town. So, um, on that note, I was hoping to bring up my presentation that I submitted today and walk through it. Uh, it's a continuation of the comments from the previous meeting. Um, are you able to pull that up, Ms. McAllister?
Yes, uh, titled Lund Letter to ZBA. Does that sound right?
Yep, that's the one. And really, the, the issue that, again, we're appealing is, is that the building permit and all those items stated were issued on the notion that the business as it stands and as it moves forward is all allowed by right within this zoning district. And, um, by according to multiple sources, the business owner themselves, um, respectfully, Mr. Donahue, their attorney's statements, another property that is tied to this, uh, location, and, uh, the ZBA decision that went with that, all state special permit at the least, if not variances, were required for the allowed, for the uses going on there. And that the business moving forward, uh, requires these. So on that notion, um, that's the first page. Um, again, that just, uh, relates back to the, uh, what's the jurisdiction? And that decision that was made, the building permit was issued on December ninth. So my comments are all tied to the building permit date of December ninth. What stood and what is the intended proposal of that business on that location? Next page, if we could. Um, yep, there's several bits of evidence. We've already put some in, in, in place already. Um, next page. Here's the decision for two sixty Cherry Street. And, uh, I can't see it, but I highlighted the tie-in under findings, the fact that the equipment on display at two sixty Cherry Street, the location that required a special permit comes from JCB at the two thirty Cherry Street location. And, and again, JCB, our Northland JCB and NITCO operate. There's both signs on the facility at two thirty Cherry Street. Uh, if we keep going. Based on that equipment going from two thirty to two sixty, a decision was made by the ZBA back in two thousand and twelve at two sixty. And deed needed a special permit for the sale of that equipment coming from two thirty over to two sixty. Uh, so that's the ZBA, uh, um, proof that special permit is required. If we move on to the next page. There's the letter I, uh, presented to the board back on the first hearing. And it clearly states, uh, it's, um, several areas that they continue and intend to repair equipment, service rental equipment. They intend to sell equipment. Uh, number three, new equipment, used equipment, uh, will be significantly reduced, not eliminate. And they have made it clear, uh, in this letter, several of the attorney's letters, that they are not stopping. They are going to continue to repair and sell equipment here. Uh, the use of the evaporator, item eight, it's, uh, that steam bay is going to be significantly reduced. Again, not ended. They're not changing their business model. All the business on the, uh, internet that they advertise going on at this location is sales, service, repair. All that's going to continue. So we move on to the next page. Uh, again, here's the letter from, um, Mr. Donahue back for the first hearing. Uh, I highlighted that, yeah, they, they no longer have a full-service shop. Um, that full-service shop required special permit and variance, actually, for repair. Never got one. It went under the radar of Shrewsbury's zoning. Uh, they're going to reduce, again, reduction in new, new equipment storage. Preparation of rental equipment will still continue. Again, all in the letter, January twenty-second. Move on to the next pages. Uh, this bit of evidence was, uh, newly presented towards the end of this past week. Um, here I highlighted that they have been occasions in which a unit has been on-site for either resale or service. That's going to continue as we see on the next page. So here we've tied in two sixty Cherry Street. Um, there is on occasion construction equipment at two thirty Cherry Street, which constitutes rental inventory in the ordinary course of NITCO's business. That is not ending. That rental equipment is still going to be on-site, still going to require service after every use. Um, the vehicle repair service section of this page, could scroll down a little bit. Moving forward, the property will be used as a support facility. Repairs, work on vehicles will be limited, not eliminated, will be limited to preparing rentals on the turn of rentals and new delivery prep. Folks, what is new delivery prep? They're selling construction equipment. You don't prep construction equipment. You don't put it on display at two sixty Cherry Street if you're not selling it. You don't put it on the internet that you're selling it there if you're not selling it. Finally, or not finally, but to wrap up this page, uh, repairs for customer equipment did occur. Agreed. Vast majority of the service work is performed. The majority is performed out on the field, not all of it. Per their building permit that they applied for and got a, got issued, they're enlarging a door. Their site plan, which is now going in front of planning board on March four, shows, uh, oil, gas, and sand separator for inside the building. All indicators that there is repair going and service still continuing in that building. So even their plans and everything in the proposal point towards uses requiring special permit and/or variance. Um, next page. Again, reduce in operation, not eliminate. The tenant has specifically stated that the manner in which it intends to use two thirty Cherry Street effective April first. I agree. They did specifically state, and that's the letter from NITCO. I, uh, in this package that was presented back in January, and I show again tonight. Next page, please. Uh, the photograph taken today. And, uh, Ms. Sheen might be able to attest to this. The forklifts in the back in the property itself, this tenant over at two thirty Cherry Street has not once in one year, of all the photographs I've taken, used the parking lot per the site plan that was approved or any site plan they're presenting as part of the building permit. They have equipment everywhere. And they're going to continue to do that to sup, to support their sales, their rentals, and their services. Um, is that the last page? I think it is. So, thank you. Uh, that's, that's the presentation. Um, I appreciate the time to walk through this again and show everybody, uh, everything we pulled together so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Attorney Donahue?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Mark Donahue from Fletcher-Tilton. On behalf of Polito Development Corp, the owner of the land and the party who pulled the building permits, sent it to the appeal. Um, what, what has been conflated by Mr. Lund and, and could be the source of some confusion to the board is the different businesses going on between two sixty Cherry Street and two thirty Cherry Street. And the focus of the appeal is limited to two thirty Cherry Street. Uh, and therefore, the discussion this evening is going to focus on the activities there and the proposed activities there. And I think why it's important is that while there was a lot of reference to construction equipment, that is the equipment that was permitted by this board to be, uh, on display at two sixty Cherry Street. And as I told the board at the last meeting, and you'll hear shortly directly from, uh, the user, that use of construction equipment by an affiliated company is in the process of being stopped. Now, there's still some equipment out there, which is there because of, uh, snow conditions and the difficulty of moving it. Um, but by April first, the ability of that company to use that site, JCB, uh, terminates. And there won't be any more construction equipment. What NITCO is involved in is not construction equipment, equipment used in constructing buildings or other, uh, or, or infrastructure. They're involved in the material handling business. It's an entirely different business altogether. And rather than me trying to describe it, what I'd like to do with your permission, Madam Chair, is introduce Rick Papalia, uh, from NITCO. And what I'd like him to do is explain exactly what is involved with material handling equipment, what the nature of the business is, and you can hear from him how the predominant activity is the rental of that equipment to various users in and around the area.
Certainly. Thank you. Mr. Papalia?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Rick Papalia, uh, Executive Vice President. And, uh, I live at Four Ridge Road in Pepperell, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Well, I'll, I'll try to do my best, uh, with answering, uh, your concerns tonight and describing what we do. Uh, in the material handling business, basically, we support customers who have to move or store product. Uh, the best way that I could describe, uh, what our average customer may look like is going inside a Home Depot or a Lowe's. You see racking, you see product on the shelves. Uh, you see forklifts and stand-up reach trucks. That is considered material handling equipment that would need to move or store product. Uh, some ancillary products, uh, to that would be a motorized, uh, pallet jack where you would walk behind one or stand on one to ride on long runs. You could have scissor lifts that are used for, uh, which is called, uh, man-up units that are used for inventory purposes or building maintenance, like changing light bulbs in the ceiling on hard surfaces in a warehouse. And we also would do things like, um, uh, sell floor cleaning equipment, uh, that would clean the floor, such as in a Home Depot, uh, with, uh, larger areas to mitigate dust and, and so forth. So I know there's, uh, questions about two thirty Cherry Street. And, uh, if I could allow us to describe, uh, the letter and some of the changes there. Um, basically, uh, over a year ago, uh, we, um, decided to not service construction equipment in what we would call, uh, the Shrewsbury Service Area. Uh, our facilities handle certain areas, uh, so the technicians are, uh, live in the area and they are supported by the, the facility. So the work for those construction customers that, uh, did not do their own service work was performed, uh, by the Wilmington technicians. Um, we also, um, don't sell construction equipment from this facility. In, in the right sizing of the facility, our footprint is basically going to be cut, uh, in half of the existing facility. And we will no longer have the full-service shop where any new truck preps that we would normally do there, uh, major repairs that we would not be able to do in the field at a customer's site because it is too big, too long of a repair, or we would need other equipment in the shop to do it safely. We would have it transported to the shop and do the work there. So we have overhead cranes and forklift lifts that we would use. For example, uh, the bigger equipment in those shops. That equipment has such, uh, been, has since been removed and relocated to some of our other facilities. And in the new space, we actually will not have a technician bay. So it has been referenced to, uh, prepping of rentals. And a rental prep could be a check-in when a customer is done with it and comes back to our facility. Or a checkout where we would get it ready to make sure, uh, who we were going to deliver it to is, is working properly. So that would require some minor steam cleaning, which we have a, a steam clean bay. And the wastewater is evaporated with our, uh, evaporator. So it eliminates, uh, paying for wastewater to be hauled off the property. So it eliminates paying for wastewater to be hauled off the property. So there's been many changes there and one of the the primary reasons for the facility to stay in existence are two. One is a a static display, which is our innovation center. So we have advanced technology units. Where we would invite a customer in to look at products that they are not aware of. Such as robotics or automated guided vehicles. And we have a static display and probably one quarter of the space that is going to be ours as we move forward. And we're going to have the the other half of the remaining space is going to be our parts department. Where we've relocated a parts office, there'll be two parts clerks. We have a a vast art storage there to support our technicians. So normally in their vans, they can't carry all the parts needed to serve all the products we sell. So they are in and out quite often getting parts to support their needs in the field. And if there ever is a a need for a shop repair for any of our customers. That repair will be brought to the Wilmington facility, which has a full service, a full service shop as well. Hope that that generally describes what we're doing unless you have any questions, I could further describe what you need.
Thank you, Mr. Papalia.
Can I respond for the, can I respond to Mr. Papalia?
If 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 we can be allowed to finish our presentation.
Certainly, Mr. Lund, if you don't mind waiting.
So with with that background and with Mr. Papalia here certainly to answer any particular questions. What I want to do is focus on Mr. Lund's three areas of grievance in his appeal. And bring those to better clarification as to what's involved. He asserted as part of his appeal that there are automobile sales going on at the site. And in support of that, he provided to the board a number of different screenshots showing that. A NITCO is a Polaris dealer and extrapolated that to all terrain vehicles, which your bylaw does describe. Analogous to passenger vehicles. What instead is one particular type of material handling or individual movement. Vehicle that Polaris has that is analogous to really a golf cart. As far as the part of that the driver is in, an open area without doors necessarily. And with an extended bay in the back to move materials in and around a facility in some fashion. We gave the example of a grounds crew at a college campus, for example, moving things from one location to another. That doesn't qualify as automobile sales. Except by trying to stretch the interpretation to a point of absurdity as those terms are used. Nor is it the primary activity that goes on at NITCO. It's a one-vehicle type of operation for Polaris, there's not a line of vehicles that are maintained there. It's not there for people to come and see and kick the tires, so to speak. As a retail type of showroom, it's available. Those vehicles are in the fleet of vehicles that are rented by NITCO. And therefore circulate around and yes, on occasion they are sold, but it's an it's an ancillary activity, the primary. Activity that you heard Mr. Papalia talk about, which is the rental of this equipment that moves forward. And that gets to the second point, or or to some extent, the second point. That Mr. Lund raised, which deals with vehicle repair and service. You've already heard from Mr. Papalia that to the extent those repairs were done onsite previously. All of that equipment's been removed and in the reduced footprint, there is no physical location in order to do that. So we are talking about something that will no longer exist. Once Polito Develop it is allowed to proceed with the building permit and demise the premises into two locations. But that's not to assume that somehow NITCO has been caught in the act of violating the zoning bylaw. Because one has to recognize that this equipment that they are fixing is their equipment, their own. And they're fixing it as part of their activity, the permitted activity of distributing on a rental basis, the equipment. And therefore fixing it along the way. And I would suggest to you that for this type of business distributing this type of goods, which unlike many. Instead of would be a one-way trip of goods leaving and never coming back, where these circulate back. Preparing them to go out again is part and parcel of the activities that should be going on. But as Mr. Papalia indicated, it's all in the past. And there's no question that it cannot physically occur in the future. Mr. Lund made reference this evening that somehow it's been, it's clear that. There's a an effort to deceive the board by pointing to the overhead door that's part of the new plans. And pointing to the oil gas separator, which is part of the site plan. The open door that that he refers to isn't in the NITCO space. It's for the new tenant that's going into the warehousing and distribution of floral products in the space that NITCO is giving up. It's so they can pull those in, obviously in weather conditions being floral products. The oil gas separator, as Mr. Lund probably knows, is a required feature as required by the building code. For so the building has to have it and it's going to be done in that fashion, whether it's necessary or not isn't a question, it's simply required as part of the plan. The confusion is in in talking about equipment and not bifurcating or treating them separately, the construction equipment. As one drives by the site, there is construction equipment that can be seen there. It's still sitting out there on the corner of Cherry Street and Route twenty today. But that activity is on a different site, it is on two sixty Cherry Street. It is ceasing as of April first, it is no longer going on. That equipment was never being serviced in any fashion. As construction equipment at two thirty Cherry Street. There was passage between the two sites of some equipment. And there was on occasion outdoor storage, which Mr. Lund didn't necessarily object to as part of his appeal. But that once again is all history. It was not going to continue, NITCO is not in the construction, sales, service or rental business. They're in the material handling business in that fashion. And it's a totally different type of operation. And while I can understand some of the confusion, I think what's important particularly is we talk about the building permit, which is the gravement of this. Which reduces the footprint so that the building will serve in a fashion that is consistent with most of the what Mr. Papalia said. Which is as a satellite operation predominantly or significantly for the turn of rental vehicle or rental equipment. And for parts supply, not to the public, but for their technicians to be able to pick up at a convenient location. Is well within the authority granted for users in the industrial zone. Mr. Papalia and I would be glad to try to answer any questions, further assist the board.
Thank you very much. I do want to circle back to Mr. Lund and just give you a minute to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Papalia. You drafted the letter dated January twenty first. Twenty twenty one that was given as as. Information to use in presentation for the first public hearing back on January twenty fifth, is that correct?
Madam Chair, if I might.
Yes, sir.
I'm not going to have my client interrogated. If if Mr. Lund has a question, I serve as counsel to the property owner. And if Mr. Papaya is the right person to respond to it, then we can have it. But this this interrogation must be going towards some meaningful point.
Ms. Chair? This is a public hearing and Mr. Papalia spoke at it. I I don't know that we're in a court, I I think I have the opportunity to ask Mr. Papalia if he's going to provide public comment. I think we can talk about the NITCO letter that he also submitted, can we not?
Attorney Mades, can we get your way and.
Thank you, good evening, it is a public hearing, but everything should go through the chair. Parties shouldn't be directing, asking other parties to respond to their questions, the chair will control the meeting.
I I, Madam Chair, I'll take it in a different direction, the letter that was submitted in front of the board. On January twen- for January twenty fifth hearing came from Mr. Papalia. They're currently a full-service workshop, they are, they intend to continue to to provide new and used equipment. That equipment, by the way, folks, I gave evidence back at that twenty fifth hearing through the NITCO site. And the the dealer one class one license they received in May from the Board of Selectmen. One of the manufacturers that they provide all this sales rental in service of is street sweepers. Ravi or Rav was the letter I submitted. To, I believe I had it to the board on the January twenty fifth hearing. As well as it was copied from the Board of Selectmen's hearing in May. So the equipment that NITCO sells, including gem by Polaris. And the street sweepers and the scissor lift that Mr. Papalia had mentioned earlier tonight. All qualifies under the the sales of construction equipment per the the bylaw definitions. The the service and repair garage definition is a building or part thereof. And which repairs or service may be carried on, that's the the bylaw definition. The overhead door, I would politely request Miss Sheen to speak to that, I have a copy of the construction plan. The vestibule is to the left of that overhead door. The tenant, NITCO tenant is on the right, I'm confused that that overhead enlargement door is not part of that. In the in the first construction plan that I saw. So the the point being, all the letters, the NITCO letter, the attorney letters. All the information provided via our eyes looking at the site all speak. The the use of the evaporator for continued maintenance and service prep and repair of rentals. All speaks to repair, service, construction equipment, sales. I I I don't know what else could possibly be provided. We required a special permit at two sixty Cherry Street for the same exact business. And now we don't need it for the same exact business at a different site in town. And the two are tied together, black and white, through the the special permit findings. I I I just don't know what more I could provide to the board, so that's my my next bit of comment.
Thank you, Mr. Lund, Attorney Donahue?
Well, I I think Mr. Papalia already spoke of how, I'm I'm just trying to pick off pieces that Mr. Lund referred to in. In his response, spoke to the use of the evaporator and how it's used to prepare equipment. Mr. Papaya can give some more detail as that, but it's it 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 sounds to me as it's consistent with preparing their product. Which they distribute as a rental product to go back into the market. Rick, can you add to that?
Yes, if if the board. Think this would be helpful since the letter I drafted on January twenty first. Obviously came from me, I could quickly go through these bullet points and explain them if you feel it would be helpful. So there's any lack of interpretation issues here, I could I could get through these pretty quickly if you feel that would help.
Yes, I think that would, please.
Okay, so, thank you. So first of all, I would like to say what. What also is a a factor here in in these businesses. Is the this word decouple. So in our business, what this means is the further separation of the construction business. And the material handling business in our, what we call NITCO. So in all of our other facilities, we do handle. Construction and material handling in the same facility, which tends to be a problem. Our legacy businesses is a material handling company for over forty years. We were a legacy Yale dealer and in two thousand ten became a Heister dealer and they're both owned by the same company. So as we continue to grow, we became a JCB deal in two thousand eleven. So our facilities were built and occupied. Because of we were in in the material handling business as a legacy business. So as we continue to grow, we are separating and decoupling the construction from material handling. And that is exactly what's happening in Shrewsbury, which has happened over the last year or so, like I stated. So going forward, I'll just go through these bullets real quickly. Says here, the new operation will be significantly different, nominating office space for only four to five employees daily, roughly half existing footprint, which is true. We have sixteen technicians that all work at the facility, three of which were in the shop. Now those three will become road technicians because we will not have shop personnel at the facility any longer. So we will again be operating on half the footprint, there is no, what we would consider technician bay. What will be inside is the Innovation Center. A parts area for part storage and the parts office. And a a new service office for two service people. And the other remaining area is the area that takes up from the steam bay. And what would be considered equipment storage. So the equipment that is onsite, I'll get down to in bullet three. But again, in number two, we will no longer have a full service shop. That means no repairs will be done onsite other than the minor work that may be necessary. Checking in or checking out a rental, meaning there is a light bracket that needs to be changed, a tire that needs to be changed. A small service, a hose, very minor work that can be handled in the facility to prep a rental as a check in or check out. Bullet number three says new equipment, used equipment and industrial battery storage will be significantly reduced. That means there's no room left for equipment inside the facility because of the reduced footprint. And what the Innovation Center takes up and what the parts area takes up. So in the last two months, there's been significant activity moving equipment off the property. Because we physically will not have the space for it. As it stands right now, we are, we are moving from the what I would consider the right side of the building. Over to our reduced footprint and with that, we're relocating offices. Taking down and moving shop equipment, parts and buildings, walls. We're moving everything out into the reduced area and including we're moving equipment off the property. Which meaning new use and industrial storage will be significantly reduced. What would be left there are some of the hard align rental products for our industrial line. Sit down rider forklift, pallet jacks and also floor cleaning equipment, which can be a walk behind or a ride on unit. For inside a warehouse and as Mr. Lund stated, we do have a rabo line of street sweepers. So there's I think two onsite right now that we typically would rent out as well. Number four, Shrewsbury operation will be considered a satellite support facility managed under Wilmington, what that means is is exactly that. A satellite support facility, a facility that does not have a shop. And supports the local technicians and local customers, our technicians live in in around the area. And without a a place to get parts and support and supplies, we would not be able to serve our customers locally. Number five, it will primarily be for part support for field technicians and local customers, as I just stated. Local equipment prep for local customer needs will continue, which we are are coming right out and saying that that will continue. Rental goes out for a day, a week, a month or long term. And occasionally comes back off of Brent after the customer is done using it for a a short period of time. Number seven, no shop repairs will take place other than minor new equipment prep and and rental preps. New equipment would be something like a new floor scrubber because we will have floor scrubbers there. And that basically means greasing it, operating it, checking it out and then delivering it to the customer. By a contracted hauler. Number eight, use of evaporator for the steam bay runoff will significantly reduce since no major shop will be taking place. So when you're doing major work. You're removing drive trains, mass and and repairing major components. There's a a heavier use of a steam cleaner to basically clean and degrease the unit, which goes into a trap. And it is goes through an oil water separator and the water wastewater gets evaporated into the air. By an evaporator unit. by an evaporator unit. So, because all we'll be doing is cleaning off a rental to go out and cleaning off rental that came in, the use of that would be significantly reduced, as stated. And number nine, "The Static Innovation Center will continue to showcase our equipment and, and integration solutions for material handling, product storage, and advanced technology solutions as robotics and automation." So, meaning we are a material handling solutions provider. So, from the racking, the door equipment, the safety equipment, the, uh, the, uh, equipment itself in or robotics or automation, we have solutions for a customer to move or store product, just like you'd see in a Lowe's or a Home Depot application. So, I hope that helps a little bit. Thought I'd just cover those points in case there was any questions on those.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, if I could add one more thing, just real brief. Uh, sales and rental are required special permit.
Thank you. Okay. Um, I think at this point, I'd like to invite town council or staff members to, uh, weigh in if there's anything, um, they would like to add. Attorney Middells?
Thank you. Good evening. So, as the chair stated, this is a continuation of the public hearing that we started back in January, and the, um, Board of Appeals is on a fact-finding mission. Um, I, listening to the presentations, I think you should pay particular attention to the defined terms within our bylaw, um, particularly warehouse distribution, which I just flagged. Is defined as a building or use designed for the storage, wholesale, and distribution of manufactured products, supplies, and equipment. And also, um, I noted that accessory retail, um, as defined in the table of uses is allowed in the limited industrial. I don't know how much that applies to some of what we heard, but, um, also in addition to what Mr. Lund has cited as, uh, the uses that are both prohibited and require a special permit, um, construction equipment, sales, and automotive sales. Those defined terms, as you've heard the facts presented by both sides. Um, and then you can deliberate about your findings. We do have to dispose of, make decisions on each element of, uh, the appeal that was filed, including, um, the appeal of the building permit, which we omitted on the, um, outline previously presented. But that's, you know, we don't want to lose sight of that as you, uh, consider each of those five claims of a zoning violation, in addition, the appeal of the building permit that has since been suspended.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I have Attorney Middells just repeat the warehouse distribution definition? I have the zoning bylaw in front of me, but I don't want to look for it.
Sure. So, warehouse and distribution is defined as a building or use designed for the storage, wholesale, and distribution of manufactured products, supplies, and equipment.
Thank you.
Could we also have read the terms of, uh, sales room for construction equipment too, please?
I can do that, if I may, to the chair?
Yes, please.
Um, sales room for agricultural and construction equipment, recreation vehicles, motorhomes, trucks and boats, that's the defined use. Um, a building or use designed for the sale or rental of farm and construction equipment, recreation vehicles, motorhomes, trucks, boats, marine supplies, and other similar products. And a sales room for automobiles and motorcycles is a building or use designed for the sale of passenger vehicles and motorcycles, including all-terrain vehicles, all trucks with a gross vehicle weight of fourteen thousand pounds or less, but not including agricultural, construction equipment, and motorhomes, recreation vehicles greater than twenty feet in length. And... In the limited industrial, garage and repair shop is not an allowed use. Sales room for construction equipment is allowed by special permit. A sale room for automobiles is not allowed.
Thank you. I think at this time... Yes, Attorney Donahue?
I, I, I think I meant, I think you had member George first asking, but then if I could have a moment.
Madam Chair, Doc, can I just ask a question? Why the, uh, building permit was suspended?
I'd like to, um, can I get, uh, someone from the town? Patty, would you like to address that or Bernie?
Right, because as we may have discussed at the last meeting is that, um, the building code says that you have to make sure that you're, uh, in compliance with the zoning bylaw before releasing the building permit. And so, with these, you know, questions about the operation on the site, that's why the building permit was suspended due to the application of the appeal.
And one other question, what, uh, Mr. Papalia stated tonight, was that presented to you when the building permit was applied for?
So, all the information that's being presented at both of these meetings was not in the, um, completely in the building permit application? No, a lot of this is new information.
Thank you.
If, if I might, Madam Chair?
Certainly.
Thank you. Let, let me, let me touch on what might be the, the inquiry as to whether this use, as Mr. Papalia described it, falls in that general category of construction equipment, recreation vehicles, motorhomes, trucks and boats, because of the phrase that's in your bylaw or other similar products. We don't believe it does in any fashion. And I think what the, the distinguishing factor is, is agricultural and construction equipment, RVs, motorhomes, trucks and boats are, are, if not universally, almost always, uh, the subject to outdoor storage and, and, and maintenance in that area. Um, that's certainly the reason why, uh, one would want to have a special permit because of the appearance of it. Um, the materials that, that Mr. Papaya is talking about are, or have been traditionally passing through the inside of the building without extensive storage outside. And therefore, we don't see it as analogous to construction equipment at all. It certainly has been the conflation prior to the decoupling that Mr. Papaya talked about, that you had both construction equipment and material handling equipment. But that is now in the past, once that material comes off-site by the, during the month of, uh, March.
Madam Chair, um, scissor lifts are something I've used for twenty years in construction, and Mr. Papalia mentioned those as a product that's still going to come out of this facility. Uh, same with street sweepers. I'd put a street sweeper akin to a piece of construction equipment before I'd ever put it akin to, uh, some sort of pallet jack inside a warehouse. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone on town staff that would like to add any information that we have not gone over?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, I think at this point, I'd like to start to get the board to weigh in with questions and comments. If I could start with Lisa, please?
Madam Chair, oh, sorry, go ahead. I was just going to say, don't forget the public hearing part.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Let's do, uh, comments, I think, first from the, from the board, if that's okay. Lisa?
Sure, so, thank you. Um, thank you, everyone, for preparing all this information for us. I do have some questions, and I think, uh, well, I will direct my questions through you, Madam Chair, to the appropriate party. Um, I, okay. Where do I start? I have them all highlighted. Okay, I do have a question, Madam Chair, for, um, Mr. Papalia. You, Mr. Papalia mentioned a innovation center and mentioned robotics and automated self-driving vehicles, I believe, it's a static display. Uh, I wasn't clear on who comes to use this? Is this, is the intent for sales or is it for, um, rental? What is the purpose of that innovation center?
There's no good answer, so I'll go here. Sorry.
Yes.
The, the Innovation Center, uh, is really, again, a static display to showcase to customers that we would, uh, escort in, to show them products that they are not aware of or technology they are not familiar with to help improve the efficient operation of, of their business, to help them move or store products more efficiently.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Lisa?
Move and store keeps being used? I'd like to understand more about what that is, what the transaction is. So, a customer comes and sees this equipment, they then choose to rent or purchase, and then have that equipment moved to their location?
So, basically, um, our business in material handling, um, first of all, is, is, what I would say, not a walk-in business. So, that's why we're typically in industrial parks, right? We don't need to be a storefront on the main road because people drive by and want to stop and come in. This is a, a business-to-business transaction, and our salespeople are calling on businesses. And as they are trying to provide solutions, uh, and trying to, um, make customers aware or educate customers on possible solutions, sometimes it's better to, to take them to our Innovation Center to have them see the equipment, touch the equipment, because sometimes you can't do this out of, out of a catalog. So, if they're interested in, it may be something where they set up a, a demo or a rental from that. And ultimately, the goal is, is to certainly, uh, sell equipment. But the, the, um, meet, the purpose of the Innovation Center is to show them what's possible. That's different than what they're, they're doing today.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I'm going to reserve my comments for later. I have no more questions at this time.
Thank you, Lisa. Peter, can I go over to you with questions, comments?
Sure. Um, so, I guess I'd, I'd start by thanking Mr. Papalia for, for his sort of straightforward, um, addressing of the letter, um, sorry, I'm capping. Um, to the talky-talk. Um, and sort of explaining how you see your business going forward. I think that was very clarifying. I think where I struggle, um, is what seems like the very significant evidence of things going on at the property that are not permitted by the, the zoning rules, or at least not at a permit. Um, and I want to give Attorney Donahue sort of a, an opportunity to go through it because I, what I'm struggling with is that I'm hearing, you know, we have no plans for sales in the future, but, you know, we do rent stuff, and of course, we do have sales from time to time. You know, we don't sell passenger vehicles, um, but we do occasionally sell a vehicle that has two seats and a steering wheel that looks like a golf cart. Um, you know, we don't, uh, have construction vehicles, but of course, we do have forklifts and street sweepers. Um, so it seems like there's a lot of sort of, um, I feel like we're slicing the salami a little thin, if that's a way of putting it, that we're, we're drawing some distinctions here that feel like, as a layperson, not in your, your industry, looking at them and going, gosh, it looks an awful lot like they're selling passenger vehicles and construction equipment. And we have a letter from the president saying like, "We're going to continue these activities at a reduced capacity, but we're also hearing that those activities will be abandoned." I think Mr. Papalia put a lot of that to rest by going through the letter. But in terms of the zoning issues, or, you know, the idea that, um, you know, that this neighboring property, two sixty, is unrelated, um, you know, but it certainly sounds like they were related. Um, you know, there's equipment parked out in front of it. So, I guess I just want to sort of clear up, um, these things that seem to be kind of on both sides of the line. Um, because sort of where I'm falling right now is, again, Mr. Papalia really cleared it up for me, I think, a lot as to what the future intentions are and what can actually occur at the site, given the, the forward-looking plans. But in terms of the stuff from the past, I mean, I even see in the letter here, um, it's dated February eighteenth, um, that there are these, that these vehicles that Mr. Lund took were only on a two-day period in May. I mean, you go to Google Maps and you look at, uh, the street view, and you can see one there, and that's not in the day in May. Uh, Mr. Lund provided a picture taken today that shows some of this stuff. Um, so, you know, I just want to make sure before I make a decision based on what I feel like I'm seeing as the balance of the evidence, that we have an opportunity to sort of explain some of these things that feel kind of fuzzy to me. So, I'll leave it there and see before.
Thank you. Are you directing your question, Attorney Donahue, I assume?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
So, let, let me try to give an oversight, and then Mr. Papaya can certainly weigh in a, a little bit more as to the fine line we're talking about. Um, first, as to, for example, the photograph that Mr. Lund provided today, that might be, uh, an example of the activities that do happen at NITCO in the ordinary course. What he provided was a, a photograph of a, um, uh, a, uh, flatbed with a forklift on it and a scissor lift on it, uh, two pieces of handling equipment, um, that were either coming back from a customer or going out to a customer in some fashion. Uh, but that's the purpose of that equipment. Now, does that equipment get used at a construction site at times? Yes, it does, so don't buckets. Um, but we don't consider buckets the sale of, of, of construction equipment. I think you have to take the ordinary termination, uh, of, of the terms used in your bylaw and apply them in this case. There are sales that don't occur, and I think the difference that we're talking about is that there are, as Mr. Papaya just described, there's a sales force for NITCO out in the marketplace on a regular basis. The effort there is to sell rentals because that's the primary business of NITCO. But if somebody decides they want to own a forklift, that forklift is acquired not by somebody coming to two thirty Cherry Street and picking it up in any fashion, rather, they place the order with the salesperson. That, that vehicle or that, that piece of equipment is brought to the closest point, and if that's two thirty Cherry Street, is prepared for delivery. It's then given to a third-party contractor who moves it to the site. So, two thirty Cherry Street has a role in the sale, but it's a long way from being a sales role for these type of products, which is what the use is that's involved, where people come in order to, to perform it, rather, two thirty Cherry Street.
I just want to jump in with a clarifying question. So, no one ever signs a purchase and sale agreement at two thirty Cherry Street? You represent that?
I, I don't know about never, that's a strange term. I'll let Mr. Papaya try to answer as to whether, where, where a sale could occur in what fashion.
Yeah, so just to, just to back up one quick second, too, I think, um, when you talk about the, the line, right, material handling, construction, it's all equipment, you know, it's all different colors and does different things. But basically, um, as someone in the industry, I would classify as material handling as the warehouse equipment. And I would classify construction equipment as what we call ground engaging, right? Backhoes, loaders, you know, ground engaging equipment would be...
Big.
That, 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 yeah, that traditional construction equipment. Uh, however, it, it is no secret that JCB is a construction manufacturer of construction equipment. Uh, but just because JCB sign is on the scissor lift in the picture that was described, doesn't mean it's a construction scissor lift, right? Uh, if you look closely at that picture, you'll see that there appears to be non-marking solid tires on that, on that machine. That's because that's used on a hard cement surface as a warehouse. So, it doesn't mean that it isn't used one time at a construction site, somebody putting up a steel building. It means it's not a, a ground-engaging all-terrain, uh, scissor lift. However, they do have those. They have boom lifts that are on... boom lifts that are on for altering purposes. We don't have those, right? That, what you see there is a scissor lift. Now, that scissor lift specifically, the, the JCB scissor lift is actually marketed and serviced by the material handling side of our business because those are the techs that are certified to work on them and do the ANSI inspections for them. Our construction techs don't work on that equipment. So the reason we also like that JCB scissor lift is that it's actually a safer unit for the customer because it met forward-looking safety features. So when the unit is lowered, it's a safer unit for the operator. So we're, we're very proud of that, actually, to have that in, in the material handling side of the business. So as you mentioned about signing lease papers or documents for the sale, I, I won't, I won't tell the board here that it has never happened at, at 230 Cherry Street, but it's traditionally not like an automotive dealership where you walk in, you go office to office and the financing and the extended warranty and you get, you get the parade of offices signing all your paperwork. That usually happens at the customer's site. We are a, a business-to-business company where we're doing most of our work at the customer, whether it's presentations, sales transactions, servicing equipment. That's where the equipment is. That's where our customers are. But typically, we're there. So as I mentioned before, we are not a, a walk-in business. When we have construction equipment at our facilities and do work and sell there at the other facilities, it's actually a problem for us because we're in an industrial park buried in the back somewhere and the construction customers don't drive by and see us. The construction customer likes to come in and see the equipment when they're on their way home from the job site to stop in and see what's going on, pick up some for tomorrow and, and, and go on their way. So we call that a retail application. So the material handling side of our business as 230 Cherry Street is, is, is not that. I'm not going to tell you that a, a customer hasn't walked in and needed parts, but certainly it's there going forward as a satellite business to support our local technicians and customers. Hope that clarifies a couple of things.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter, are you, more questions, comments?
No, I mean, I, again, I think Mr. Papalia cleared things up quite a bit. You know, in terms of the, the other vehicles that are there, the thing that, that appears to be sort of like a, something to move people and, and equipment and whether that qualifies as a, a construction vehicle or a motor vehicle or, you know, passenger vehicle that's also a little bit fuzzy. And the relationship between the two sites, I think, is also seems to be a little bit of a complicated question. And I see, you know, the, the board will hear from NICO that the facility at 260 Cherry Street is no longer being operated by NICO or any related company. That's as of when? That's a question for Mr. Donahue, I guess.
The, the, the right ceases on March 31st. The equipment has to be moved before then. I, I don't know if Mr. Papaya has a specific date for when the equipment is going to be moved in.
Yes, right now, there's actually no need for it to be there. It's just a matter of moving it as soon as possible. I don't, I haven't been by. I don't know the snow issue around it or if we can even get to it, but certainly it's, it's a, my understanding is it's there as another static display, right? It's not anything but a, a gravel pad that was there to place equipment up elevated so it wouldn't be in water. And as soon as we can get it out of there before the 31st, that, that it'll be removed.
Okay. And then going forward, it says it will no longer be operated by NICO or any related company. Is that to say, well, is there any sort of common ownership or common personnel or is this like a arms-length third party that will be at that site and using that area?
Through you, Madam Chair. That property is also owned by Toledo Development Corporation. The special permit remains in force and effect and they'll probably be seeking another user to utilize the special permit or put the property to some other use, but it's, it's not part of the ongoing business arrangement with NITCO as to 230 Cherry Street and the lease rights expire as of March 31st. So.
Okay, that's helpful. Okay, I, I'll stop there and let other people jump in.
Thank you. Patrick, do you have any questions, comments?
No, all the questions that I did have have been answered by either Attorney Donahue or Mr. Papaya, so I am good right now.
Thank you. Paul George, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have a question. I'm wondering if a, another special permit would, would cover doubt of sale of any type of material out of that building, because I think it's an enforcement nightmare for the building inspector to follow through without having any concrete definition of what's being done in that building. That's just my thought on the process.
Attorney Donahue, do you want to comment?
Well, I, I, I think that, that the benefit of what's going on is based upon what is now in the record, both by Mr. Papaya's letter and his testimony this evening, which is obviously on, on the record in every fashion. So, you know, if, if those activities are inconsistent with what he has said in some fashion, then the building inspector will be able to, as, you know, will, will clearly be able to point to his representations here as to the scope of the work. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure that, that his activities, as he refers to the sales and the role that this building has in that sales, gets to the level of the special permit that's required. I think that's, that's a fair issue, but it's also not necessarily an issue that's tied inextricably to the, to the building permit. You know, certainly what Mr. Papaya has indicated is those sales, the primary business of NITCO is the rental of this equipment for, for its purpose. That's not to say sales don't occur, but there's no, there's no inventory there to come as a showroom to see. Static display is, is just that. You can kind of get a better grip of it, but it's not like you can necessarily drive some piece of equipment around his limited-space shop at that point. So that's more just part of a sales effort in the business-to-business commerce. It's a lot different than the retail operation.
Madam Chair, can I comment as well, please? Is that okay?
Uh, yes, Chris, go ahead.
Okay, so Innovative, Innovation Center for Demonstration of Equipment Rental. The pneumatic tired street sweeper in the same Google street image that Mr. McKay friends, whatever that was, ground mount, was street sweeper equipment. This is all equipment shown through NITCO and it's going to continue to be sold. Contracts still being written at 230 Cherry Street. I'm just still hearing all, all the requirements of special permit for, for equipment. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, I see your hand up?
I know. If everybody else on the board has been given a chance to ask their questions and comments, I, I just want another turn. That's all. Okay. You tell me. You didn't, Mary Beth.
It's fair. I think, I'm good. You, you go ahead, Lisa.
Okay. So I, I asked my question earlier. I had, I did have some comments to make and I'll, I'll make them now. Just so the, everyone, the appellant is aware of where I'm at and everyone else is, to see if we can have further discussion. So I wholeheartedly believe that the building permit was issued legitimately at the time, given the information provided. And I don't believe that this business, either now or going forward, exhibits the nuisance of what we typically define as an automotive, automotive or construction equipment's sales business, but only in terms of volume. That being said, I, I do believe that the property was used for what I think was sale of construction equipment. And I do, I believe it was used for garage and repair in the past, given the evidence provided. But going forward, I believe what has been described may be more for the storage of wholesale and distribution of manufactured supplies and equipment. I do think there's going to be enough changes that the use falls under that for me at the moment. I also believe a steam bay used for minor repairs like cleaning, greasing, and fixing, quote, a rental for check-in and checkout, still in my mind qualifies as garage and repair. So that's what I'm thinking about, all I've heard so far.
All right. I would like to save the deliberation, if we could, till the end. We, I will remind everyone, this is a public hearing and as such, I do have to open it up for public comment. So I'd like to see if there's anyone out there that would like to be heard. I don't see anybody out there, but I want to make sure that we've given adequate time for that, if we could. Okay, I think we, we've got it. I, I think before we deliberate, I would just like to, and if I could ask for brevity on this, please, just, does the appellant have any additional comments that they wish us to consider in our deliberations?
All right, thank you. No, it's all points to the same stuff. The terms of similar products for rental and sales, the terms of garage repair, the building permit being issued on uses allowed by right in the zoning district, and then clearly showing that the uses through the business's letter were not allowed by right. They were servicing and repairing equipment and they still will continue to proceed to do so. Replacement hoses, degreasing equipment, oil changes, all speak to service and repair on top of the, the sales and rental. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Attorney Donahue, can I ask you to, I'm offering you time to give us any final thoughts, additional comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to be brief and, and just take it to the macro level. NITCO has been a, a member of the Shrewsbury community for more than 10 years now. And as you've heard, their operation is now being rightsized into a different operation, but they've been in, in good standing during that period of time. They believed that they were doing, whatever they were doing as far as vehicle repairs were permitted and allowed. The definition of garage makes it clear that it excludes a private garage and we could get into that, that debate. But I, I don't think that's a good use of the board's time, given the fact that Mr. Papaya has already testified that not is it, not only is it going to stop in the future, it's already stopped now because the equipment that was critical to that has been relocated to other facilities. So what existed, maybe when Mr. Lund started this activity with the town, does, didn't exist by the time he filed his appeal with this board. And I think that the, the, the gravamen is that the building permit that's the basis of his complaint is to reduce the size of NITCO's operation and to have an operation on the remaining part of, of 230 Cherry Street that fits very clearly in the wholesale and distribution that of floral products. And, and that all would be best served by allowing the building permit to go forward and Mr. Papaya to go forward in the reduced fashion of having a satellite business, as he's described, and which is certainly binding upon him and his company in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I don't, I certainly don't mean to prolong this. I just, there was one thing that Mr. Lund said that I'm not sure Mr. Donahue addressed, which was he understood that the overhead door was on the wrong side of the partitions for it to be for the floral business. Can we give the parties an opportunity one way or another to, to show what is correct about that?
Um, I'll, I'll defer, but I don't know if he's even in a position to weigh in to the owner who gave me the information, and it's obviously his building, that he's building that door for the floral company, not for NITCO.
Madam Chair.
Okay. I'm sorry, who?
Mr. Ken Polito from Polito Development.
Please, Ken, go ahead.
To answer the question, yes, the door, the new door is going to be for Del Floral and it is, it's not part of your folks' space.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
I'm going to give you two seconds, Chris, if you don't mind. Go ahead.
Page A1, floor plans of the construction set clearly show the overhead enlarged door on the tenant two side. I don't know if Patty Sheehan can speak to this as well, but I'm looking right at it because I got a copy of it.
Patty, do we have any comments on that?
Yeah, yeah. So I'm just trying to go back and forth between pages. Yeah, so I have, I have the plans in, in front of me and what the, I think what maybe the clarification needs to be made is tenant two is the florist. And one is going to stay NICO and JCB and maybe Mr. Polito can confirm that. But I think maybe that is what the confusion is. The new overhead door is for tenant two. So maybe Mr. Polito can confirm tenant two is the florist business.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Polito, please go ahead.
That is correct. What she has stated.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alfred, thank you.
Great. Thank you. So can I, I think we need to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing so we can go into deliberation, please? Anybody?
I'd like to move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor. Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Thank you. Aye, Mary Beth. All right, board. Where do we begin? Lisa, do you want to start?
I think I already said my piece. So I, I spoke my piece, but I'm now looking at the various options.
Yeah.
We can use to move forward. So I'm, I'm, I.
So we do need to go through all six and sustain or reverse. Yes, Attorney McDowell, please.
Thank you. Through the chair, just a procedural matter. It requires four votes of the five members to overturn the determination of the building inspector.
Okay, thank you. Yes. So Peter, you look like you've got something to say over there. Lisa, I don't want to.
Sure. I, I think, like Ms. Kazat, I, I think the way that the evidence suggests that these uses that Mr. Lund points out were in fact going on in the past. I take Mr. Papalia at his, at his word that they have no intention of doing those things going forward in the manner that he stated. In other words, sales will still happen, perhaps incidentally, repairs will still happen, sort of incidental to the repair, to the rental business, you know, and so on and so forth. I guess the, the piece that I struggle with, I guess, is that, like Mr. George, I wonder if it would just be easier to have a, a special permit in this circumstance where it would just make the ground rules very clear and we wouldn't have this kind of mishegath about what are they doing, what are they not doing? Is it up to the line? Is it over the line to just kind of, you know, either get it all above board or just, or just deny it, but to have it be in this kind of interstitial space where, you know, no, we don't do sales, but yeah, sometimes we do sales. And no, we don't do repairs, but yes, we have to repair the vehicles in the rental fleet. It just kind of leaves you kind of with one foot in each camp. And I get it. I think, Lisa, Ms. Kazat nailed it right on the head, that, you know, the difference is really volume, right? That it's not, it's clearly not an automotive dealership or the kind of construction dealership with a huge caterpillar sign and a showroom and free coffee and the whole bit. But that said, they're doing stuff there that is, that is sort of literally prohibited by the bylaw. And then I guess to me, is it de minimis enough that we just say that's incidental to what they're doing and it's not a primary use and therefore you don't need a permit and it's fine? Or do we sort of, or is that too squishy? You know, and do we need to hold a harder line? Or is that too squishy, you know, and do we need to hold a harder line and say no, no sales, you know, without a permit? No repairs, no garaging. I mean, I I kind of agree, like. Oil changes, you know, that sounds an awful lot like a garage to me, the definition having an exception for private garages. You know, again, who's who's sort of is is machine sort of stuck with the the enforcement and is that kind of an impossible task? So anyway, that's sort of where my my head is at in kind of real time and I'll I'll let others speak.
Mr. George.
Yeah, I have a question for Attorney McDowell. I know they gave about nine bullet points of. What they plan on doing and what they were going to stop doing. Is there any way of tying those bullet points? To the building permit? Without going for a special permit or a special permit clarify better? What goes on in that site?
Yeah, I don't I don't think you can tie it to the building permit. Because they haven't applied for a special permit, so absent that. The the uses are as permitted or not permitted by the zoning bylaw, so it doesn't change anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Patrick?
No, like I said earlier, Mr. Donahue or Attorney Donahue and Mr. Papaya answered all my questions and I I don't have any problems. I'm I'm fine with everything.
Okay, I see Lisa.
Yeah, thanks. So the the issue before us is the appeal. Of the building inspector decision to issue the building permit, so we, no matter what, we have to. Rule on that before we can figure out what to do. Later, it would be nice to have a special permit, as you said, to define all of this, but we have to make a decision on. This appeal before us, so. With regard to that, I'm I am. I'll give you my thoughts on the garage and repair shop. I am leaning towards. Option two B, which is based on the evidence presented. Indicating that a garage and repair shop was operated on the property in the recent past. I would say I would reverse the determination of the building inspector. In that case, in the case of sales room for construction equipment. And sales room for automobiles, I may not make that same ruling because of what I said about volume. I do not believe the property, even though technically. Some transactions may have occurred, I do not believe they were in the. The amount or the volume that would make me classify them as sales room for construction equipment or automobiles. So that's where I'm leaning right now.
All right, and so three A on the construction and the sales room for automobiles. You're muted, Lisa. You're muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I would sustain the determination of the building inspector. In terms of the sales room for construction equipment, I do not believe that was occurring in enough volume to overturn that. And I would also sustain the determination of the building inspector. With regard to sales room of automobiles, I do not believe enough that was done in enough volume to overturn that. Garage and repair, however.
For what it's worth, I I would agree with those. I think I'm coming out the same way on those positions, so if that gets closer to a vote on those.
Yeah, so this is helping me getting. So can I hear from Paul? Let's just just for the deliberation purposes. Talk about two, three and four while we're on the subject. I'm just trying to figure out how how to.
My thought process on the whole. Items are, I think it would be clarified. By issue, having him go for a special permit and it would resolve all the problems of. Whether one is approved or all three is approved or whatever. That's my thought process on it.
That would require.
Would that require? Denying, in other words, or granting the appeal, so to speak, and they would have to then come back to us. With an application for a special permit.
That's my process.
Can you?
So.
Can you confirm that again? That would that would require a ruling tonight. On what would be the.
Attorney McDowell, can I ask you to rule in on that?
I I think what Mr. George was stating was that if you find that the sale of construction equipment occurred. To the extent that it created a zoning violation, the only way they can restore that is if they apply and obtain a special permit. For that use, because that use is specially permitted in the limited industrial zoning district.
Yes, but regarding the appeal that's before us right now, that would mean a decision of what?
Mr. Lund, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. George made the point that if you if you sustain the building inspector's determination that there's no zoning violation. Relative to con sale of construction equipment. Then their activities continue, you know, there's no need for a special permit because you didn't find a zoning violation, that it's ancillary to the warehouse use. But if you did find that it rose to the level of a zoning violation, now they're left with only one path to restore that, which is to obtain the special permit.
Right.
Really comes down to how strict we ultimately want to be as a board in terms of what constitutes. Sales as opposed to sort of sales ancillary to the other business that they're doing.
Right, I and I, you know, I will go back. Use Lisa's thought process on the volume that I think weighs heavily on on how we have to make a determination. In my mind.
At the very least, we don't have, we don't have significant evidence that there was high volume, and when you look at the way the site is configured. It doesn't, it doesn't sort of walk and quack like a construction equipment showroom. As opposed to a place that rents construction equipment that also sells it periodically.
Right.
My thought process is I'm just trying to. Make it easier for the building inspector enforcement of what's going on in the site. That's that's. My concern, because you know down the road, there's going to be many complaints from somebody. And it's going to be a nightmare. We've seen it happen in the past.
Right. So Paul, if I could ask, I I just want to be sure that I'm following your thought process. If you could just look at. The the drafts that we have in front of us on two, three and four. You are looking to.
Paul's talking, sorry. Paul, you're muted.
I don't have that information in front of me.
Yeah, we have to get that to him.
Oh, yeah, you need that.
There is.
Can we? Can we put it up just for the purposes of discussion, maybe, and then we'll have it? Are we allowed to do that? Sorry.
Attorney McDowell, could we have a? Thought on that?
Yeah, it's up to the board. You can do that if you if you want to.
Yeah, I think it it's it's pretty complicated what we're what we're being asked to to do, so I think. Possibly a visual would be good. Patrick, do you have it? Is that okay?
Yeah, it certainly outlines each item. So, but and 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 there's no. A presumption of of the board's decision, you know, on these deliberations that was prepared prior to this meeting, so. You know, you are of course free to change that, modify that as you find necessary collectively.
Well, I think it's just. There's a lot of weightiness to this and we need to be sure that we are being fair to all parties and. All looking at the information, I think it's it's really helpful. So Paul, you've got it right there.
And Madam Chair, while he's looking at that, after hearing Mr. George's. Comments and my own, sorry, that I made about what I believe this. Property will be used for going forward and that I do believe it falls more under the storage of wholesale. And distribution of manufactured supplies and equipment, I'm leaning more towards. Appeal of the building permit. Which is our last option.
I'd add that I am leaning towards that also, if that's an option.
On number six, Patrick?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Peter, do you stand on that? Yes, Attorney McDowell.
Through the chair, each one of these items. Is what we thought based on the appeal is what you have to make determinations on.
Each of them.
Yes.
Yeah, so the A and B are like the options for each one.
Took a little liberty on five that I'm happy to discuss with the board.
Certainly. Yeah, go ahead.
Through the chair, is that is that okay?
Please, yes, absolutely.
Number five was, you know, we we included in the advertisement that. There was an objection in the appeal about a finding that the uses weren't more detrimental to the neighborhood. That's a standard for considering expansion of pre-existing non-conforming uses, and I didn't think we had any evidence. Of pre-existing non-conforming uses. In this process, so. I didn't think you would. I I didn't know how else it could be handled other than to say that. You're sustaining the building inspector's determination, because I didn't think there were any pre-existing non-conforming uses. We're talking about an allowed use, warehouse distribution and other uses that are either a violation or the board determines. Accessory ancillary to the allowed use.
Right. Okay.
I just want to make a statement. I didn't get any of this information. In order to go through this, and there's a lot of. Things to go through to make a. Lovable vote, so I'm not really ready to vote on this. I didn't get any of this information in my packet.
Uh, this was sent to you this afternoon, Paul.
Need more time.
Yeah, we got an earlier version sent to you as well a month ago for the last meeting, which didn't vary too different from this one.
And I could, it it's not an intent to constrain the board in any way. It, I mean, the most useful purpose is perhaps to outline. Each of the items to be decided, but your deliberations prior to this being put up. Were consistent with this, you know, I mean. It doesn't change your authority to make the decisions on. Construction sales allegation, automobile sales allegation. The site plan, you know, we did receive from the property owners council that they did file for site plan. So in this draft, you know, it was to overturn the building inspector and find that site plan review is required since they filed for it. If, or you, you know, if you want to make a different finding, you may, but.
Right.
Anyway, it wasn't intended to direct the board in any way on those items.
So so let me ask you, what are we voting in favor of the building inspector's decision? In favor of the appeal by? The appellant.
It's a great question, Paul. So if you vote to sustain, you're voting to support the decision of the building inspector. So you're sustaining her determination.
Which was.
Which was to issue the permit that there was no violation. If you find that you agree with Mr. Lund. And you believe that there was a violation and that his evidence was compelling, then you would vote to reverse. Her decision, the building inspector's decision. So that's really your two choices is to either sustain. In which case. No action needs to be taken by anyone or to reverse the decision, say, we did find that there was a violation on this. Either ongoing or or prior, right, to to even if it stopped, you can find that it it did occur. And then the first one is the actual. I would probably urge the board, though it's up to the board to decide. Number one is actually the site plan. Review, which the appellant, not the appellant, the owner. Of two thirty Cherry Street has actually applied for the planning board and will be at the hearing on March fourth. So you could actually reverse that decision and they've actually already taken the steps needed to address that reversal, so.
Maybe we should just do that as a matter of course, to get.
In the interest of just moving things forward, why don't we start with the site plan review? And if someone would like to make a motion based on the information we have in front of us, I'd welcome that.
So I I moved to sustain the determination. It's sort of added caveat on the ground that they have been. Applied for site plan review anyway, and so to some extent it's moot, I guess, at this point is really what we're saying.
So I think you're mixing it up. I think.
Yeah, we're combining.
I think you're looking to reverse.
Oh wait, sorry, say again. I'm looking to reverse it. Sorry, this is confusing.
You're looking to reverse it, right? And I just also just want to make the point that we do need a two thirds favorable. Vote to pass, so four out of five members. I think, not to put words in your mouth, Peter, but I think you're looking to reverse on the site plan review. Is that correct?
I mean, essentially, it's I. It's like, sorry, this is like lost up. I like move to dismiss it because it's moot now. They have since applied. And so the question is sort of no longer appropriately before us. I don't know if you can do that, like Steve, I I I'm Attorney McDowell, I defer to you there.
I'm getting a no from.
Well, I'm inclined to dispose of it with a vote because I don't want to leave it as undecided, since it was part of the appeal. So that's why I drafted that, you know, counsel for the owner informed the board that they're filing for site plan review, so therefore. You reversing the determination that site plan review was not required. And that the property shall, you know, file in accordance with our zoning bylaw.
Okay, or can I make a motion that site plan is irrelevant? And that we do not.
What's interesting about that is the the appeal is filed and we have to make decisions on each of the elements in the appeal.
Okay. So.
So I I move that I move to reverse the determination of the building inspector that site plan review is not required. And find that site plan review by the planning board is in fact required for the subject property in accordance with section seven F by the zoning bylaw.
Second.
All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Patrick?
No.
Mary Beth, aye. So so moved, we've got a four out of five. Let's move on to. The garage and repair shop, if we could.
Madam Chair, can we discuss two, three and four together? Before making any motion?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm. I'm of the thinking that we, I I I'm looking to reverse the determination of the building inspector as for. Garage and repair shop. But sustain on construction and automobiles. That's my position at this point.
And that was mine as well, so I haven't changed my mind.
Peter, where are you? Where do you stand on these?
So I I just was going to double check the the bylaw, to the extent that there is a an exception for private garages. I did not get the sense from the record. That they're taking in equipment owned by other people to repair it. And if and and I could be wrong about that, but that's sort of what I understood from the evidence, and I think if there is that exception for private use. What I wouldn't want to happen is for, I don't know. Someone who owns their own construction equipment as part of a construction company. Who has a garage as part of their site and repairs their own equipment, I don't want to tell that person, you need to go get a special permit. For that or something, if that makes sense. I don't know that that would come up necessarily, I'm just saying like. If it turns out that it is that there is an exception for private. Garaging and repair, I think this might fall under that exception, so I'm going to double check the. if it turns out that it is, that there is an exception for private garaging and repair, I think this might fall under that exception, so I'm going to double check the bylaw now. So, so um, a yield.
So, the garage and repair fits of their own vehicles that they rent um and aren't repairing vehicles that they don't own, like a uh normal garage and repair shop, you consider that private repair, private vehicles they're repairing?
Right, so if they're, if they're, if they're repairing vehicles that they are renting to people as part of their rental business, as opposed to taking in repairs from other companies, I think it probably, it might fall under that exception. I'm looking at the definition. Garage public or storage um is defined as a building or part thereof, other than a private garage. For the storage of motor vehicles and in which repairs or service station activities are or may be carried on. Under that definition, like, this is not a, if they're only repairing their own equipment, this is not a garage, because then they're just privately using it, unless, unless it really means the private garage, like the kind on your house.
So I, I err on, I err on that, that it's just the private garage in my house. Um, the, when I look at the intent behind this, it's the amount of vehicles and what's being done there, rather than their ownership, so I still am leaning toward uh this being garage and repair activities that they're performing.
So you're looking to reverse?
And in, and, and sorry, and in enough volume, so I'm still looking at uh reversing the decision on garage and repair.
Yeah, I'm, I have to say.
That's a reasonable interpretation too, I'm just.
But thank you.
Do we want to, um, do we, can I get a motion? Would someone like to make a motion?
Unless there's more discussion.
Before you do that, I would just say that I, I would tend to, I'm going to lean towards it being private, and that I, I would uh probably not vote to.
Paul, where do you stand?
I don't know, I'm still I'm still fighting with this, and like, and I, I still think it's an enforcement nightmare.
Yeah.
And I, I just can't go for I'm in favor of going with the appellant.
So you're going to reverse it, is where you stand as well. So, yep, okay. Patrick, how about you?
I would prob, I would go with um sustaining it.
You're going to sustain, okay? So it looks like we've got a four out of five, if I'm reading the room correctly, would that be fair to say? Okay, so can I get a um?
Although, because I'm with um I'm sustaining that it, I would vote to sustain that it's not a garage, because they're using it privately for their own vehicle. So Patrick and I would be two.
Right. Three, three to two. To reverse, so uh it would be sustained.
I think if I may, through the chair.
Yes, please.
And this is, because I think someone would make the motion in the affirmative to reverse the decision, if it fails to get the required four out of five, then those that did not vote in favor would state the reasons why they did not overturn the building inspector's determination, and that would be the decision. Those that voted um nay on the motion, state the reasons that the um of, for the vote that did not overturn the building inspector's determination.
So to sustain.
Forty-eight, section fifteen requires a detailed finding on each of the items, so that's, th- those members that vote in opposition would give the reasons.
So I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, please.
My position's relatively soft, that's just the way I lead.
Okay, so I make a motion to reverse the determination of the building inspector that the subject property has not been excuse me, used as a garage and repair shop, a prohibited use in the limited industrial zoning district, and find that such use did occur on the property, and direct the property owner to cease and desist such use until and unless appropriate zoning relief is obtained.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, great. Um, all in favor, uh Lisa?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Nay.
Mary Beth, aye.
If we could have those that voted no, uh, to state the reasons.
Peter?
Yeah, I think the um, the definition of garage excludes private garages, and then I think what the zoning bylaw is trying to get at is you can't open up a garage and repair shop uh in a limited industrial zoning district that is open to the public and takes customers for the repair of vehicles. This appears to be the at least on the record, that I've seen, appears to be geared towards um their repair of their own rental fleet. Which I think is a slightly different um use than what the zoning bylaw is getting at, and appears to be accepted from the definition um of garage in the bylaw.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Patrick?
Um, I'll agree with what uh Peter just said, and um I don't think that um there was evidence presented indicating that um it was a garage and repair shop being operated.
Does that give us enough, Attorney Madals?
Yeah, thank you. That's exactly how I think this is supposed to work, so I appreciate it.
All right, wonderful. Let's uh move on to three, uh, sales room for construction equipment. Lisa, I think you're
Uh, yes, my feeling on this is due to such small volume, I don't believe, I don't classify this property as being used as a sale room for construction equipment, so I would ma, I would move to sustain.
Okay. Yep, okay, I, I would agree with that. Um, Peter, where do you stand on that?
Yeah, I think the same thing, it doesn't, I think it uh doesn't sound like they have sort of a showroom or sales room in the classic sense. It sounds mostly like they occasionally sell uh, or complete sales in the sense of delivering things to customers maybe there, and maybe sign some papers there, but that it's not sort of an outlet for the sale of construction equipment. Um, they incidentally complete some sales-related activities, but that's not the, the sort of bulk of their business.
Okay. Um, Patrick? You're muted.
Yeah, I'd sustain.
Um, and Paul, where are you at?
I don't feel there was enough information given in order to sustain.
Okay, Attorney Madals, how do you want to handle that?
Yeah, I think on this one, you could make a motion on the, on a um, the affirmative to um sustain the determination of the building inspector, and I expect we could, I think you've given all your reasons for the record, so you could just move it.
Okay. Okay, could I get a motion?
I make a motion to sustain the determination of the building inspector that the subject property is not being used as a sales room for construction equipment, a specially permitted use in the limited industrial zoning district.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
No.
Mary Beth, aye. So moved, correct? Okay, wonderful. Uh, let's move on to number four, which is a sales room for automobiles. Um, Lisa, I think we know where you stand on this. Um, you're looking to sustain?
Yes.
Um, I believe Peter, uh, did you suggest that you were also looking to sustain on this one?
Yeah, for the, basically for the same reasons as the construction vehicles one.
Got it, okay. I would agree with that. Um, Patrick, where do you stand?
I would also sustain.
Okay, and Paul?
Sustain on this one.
All right. We got a full deck here. Okay, so can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion to sustain the determination of the building inspector that the subject property is not being used as a sales room for automobiles, a prohibited use in the limited industrial zoning district.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So moved. Uh, number five, um, this is for the expansion of use um being more detrimental to the neighborhood. Okay, so how are we, um, what's our thoughts on that? Um I, Lisa, I believe you are in favor, you're going to sustain on this.
Well, I don't think there's really a, a choice to be made here. I think it's just a matter of we need to make a ruling on it because it's part of the appeal, is that correct?
Yeah.
Mister Madals, hello?
If I may? As I said earlier, this is one I took liberty of, because, and as you'll see, there's no options here, uh, but the board is free to disagree. Um, but I, I didn't hear any evidence that we had pre-existing non-conforming uses that had been expanded on a site, as the board knows, that if you have a privileged pre-existing non-conforming use, you can't alter it or expand it without a special permit, and one of the findings required for such a special permit is that the proposed use is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I've, in the appeal, I found this standard to be misplaced, and I didn't know how, you know, how you could find to reverse the decision of the building inspector on this one item, because we don't have any non-conforming uses. So I just.
Yeah, no pre-existing privilege, right.
Yeah, I just drafted it as, you know, not finding any non, pre-existing non-conforming uses, you sustain the determination of the building inspector, but I am open to discussion on this item, uh, if you want some alternative to what was prepared.
It's really sort of a housekeeping kind of motion, as opposed to substantive motion, we just have to dispose of it, because it's in there, but I, I agree that I don't, didn't see anything in the record about a privileged pre-existing non-conforming use, I don't know whether to yell.
Okay, so why don't we, can we get a uh motion?
Sure, I make a motion to sustain the determination of the building inspector in this regard, and to deny the appeal that uses uses on the property have been expanded to the detriment of the neighborhood.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye. So moved. And I think we're in a similar position for um number six, appealing of the building permit.
If I may, through the chair?
Yes, please.
Sorry, uh, similar here, um, I took a little liberty on this one, but um you know, don't let it constrain or restrain your deliberations on this important matter, but um the zoning violations did in, you know, from what I heard, didn't seem to relate to the building permit. In fact, the building permit as described was going to result in a reduction of space for the existing tenant that seems to have been the source of the activities that were challenged. So I drafted it with that knowledge, but that's, um, I don't want the board to think that they're confined in any way by what was brought.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please, Peter.
Um, I guess my, my sort of reaction is I wonder and I, and I'm interested in Attorney Madals' um opinion on this, do we need to go there? Um, in the sense of, you know, I, I think that at least a number of us agree that sort of factually, like, it does look like there were some things going on that sort of aren't sort of to the letter of the bylaw, but that we found that they were at a, that they were incidental and de minimis, or however you want to put it. Um, and that we don't, we don't, you know, maybe those things are going on now or not, and maybe they'll go on or not in the future. Um, but I tend to believe Mister Papilio when he says that they won't. Um, so we sort of, I'm sort of denying the appeal on that basis, as opposed to on the um, on the basis that they're you know, um, that they're specifically not ongoing now and will not be ongoing forever.
Ex- excellent point, and also, I, I wonder you know, I wasn't keeping score, but the prior, the five items previously, how they were determined, that alone may be the reason for our motion.
Yes.
And that's a lot.
That's kind of
Yes.
It's a little bit cleaner maybe to just say, because of these other decisions.
Yeah, so you can disregard what I drafted, and, and miss, and Peters, you know, maybe Peter can make the motion based on what he just expressed, that's
Yeah, I think that makes, so you're going to tie it back to all the um okay, so Peter, let's, I'm going to give you a crack at this one.
I'll take a swing at it. Um, I guess whereas uh the board has voted that um a determination of site plan review is in fact required, but that it has been applied for whereas the board has determined that um, or sustains the determination of the building inspector that the property is not being used as a garage and repair shop. Um, whereas the board sustains the determination of the building inspector that the subject property is not being used as a sale room for construction equipment. Whereas the board also determines that um, or sustains the determination of the building inspector that the subject property is not being used as a sales room for automobiles, and whereas the board um sustains the determination of the building inspector um that there, that there is no evidence of any um privileged existing non-conforming use. I move that the board therefore deny the appeal of the issuance of building permit C twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Uh, just a quick question. So this is a motion to deny the appeal, correct?
Correct.
Aye.
Paul?
No.
Mary Beth, aye. So moved. Okay. Um all right. So I think we need to get a motion to uh close the meeting, and I would like to um, on behalf of the board, thank um everyone involved in this. I I have, I, I, I would just like to say that I, I hope everyone feels that they've been handled fairly and adequately, and been given enough time to express their views, um, and I think that we did the best that we could do with what we had in front of us, and I respect each of our positions on this, and, and thank you all very much for your time and dedication, so. Uh, I need a motion to close the meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye. So moved. Good night, everyone, and thank you all for your time.
Good night.
Thank you all.